Please.
Maurice LaRosa.
Here.
Andrew Abanowitz. Mary Ann Turner here. Charlie Master-Birdie.
Here.
Rob Quaznicki.
Here.
Hey.
Wow, he's pretty good at throwing his voice.
Kathy Popper. Kelly Davis. Martha McLeod.
There it is. A fire evacuation, there's two means of egress out of the council chambers. First one is to our left, the audience is right. Take the first door, down the stairs, straight out into the parking lot. Second one is straight in front of us, behind the audience. Go down the stairs, take a right out into the parking lot. Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy birthday, Mr. Quaznicki.
Thank you.
Oh, do we have to sing happy birthday to?
Absolutely. Trying to avoid it.
All right. Madam Secretary, could you read the legal notice, please?
Yes, I can. The Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 30, 2018, at 7:00 PM. In the council chambers, Town Hall, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2018-0401, 108, AKA 112, Pearl Street. Application to vary section 10.10.5D to allow parking between the front of the building and the street where parking currently is not allowed. Krupa Properties LLC, owner applicant, map 024 lot 0114 TV zone. DOR, what is this thing? Can you tell me? DOR 430, 2018, MOPH 74, 2018.
DOR is the date of receipt and MOPH is mandatory open public hearing date.
Of July 4, 2018?
Yep, that's the mandatory open.
Dated this 18th day of April 2018. Mary Ann Turner, Secretary General, inquire April 18 and April 27, 2018.
We have no old business. So we'll move right to the new business, ZBA 2018-04-01. Could the applicant come forward, please?
Hassan Krupa, want to walk Pearl Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm sure you all, you guys all have one of these, what I have, as a blueprint and site plan. And we have moved into this location back in September. And now business is getting better. And we have, I highlighted a place in blue, you probably see on the site plan, that we like to use that space as a parking spot. Business getting better, need more parking. And in Tville, you know, it's lack of parking, but we do have a parking that we want to use. It's already paved and everything, it's ready to be used. And it's, there's enough distance to be as a parking space.
Is that it?
That's it. That's all we want, you know, we just want to use that space as a parking space so we don't have no problem with the zoning officer.
Okay. Could you explain to us your hardship for needing the variance?
Well, you know, as, when we doing the project, we put the minimum space of parking space allowed for the business. And then now business is actually getting better. And this is a perfect, you know, spot for my drivers to get in and out. And, you know, it's right, right next to the entrance of the building. And it is already paved and it's, it has, it's allowable for parking. As a town, you know, a town of Enfield gives 85% of usable land for a TV zone. And we only using 48% of it.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
Actually, I'd like to ask the, you folks, what were the conditions? I didn't have a copy of the conditions from the planning and zoning application. Was there supposed to be a landscape buffer there?
Landscape is on the back, actually.
These, this, while Jen is looking it up, if I could, Madam Secretary, the, when it was approved by P&amp;Z, this space was not shown during construction it was constructed. So this, this was not on the original site plan, this space.
When we went out and looked at the property, was the parking spot, was this paved area there? Or was it added after the?
It was added while, while it was being constructed and the applicant was notified during that period of time that that was not part of the approved plan.
Okay. And there is parking in the street and I've been down there and Pearl Street does allow parking in the streets.
One side of the street, correct.
One side?
One side of the street only.
Roger, one side? Which side?
I'm not familiar with it.
South section of, like going toward?
Oh, the south section is on your side?
Right, yes, correct.
So you could park in front of your building in the street?
Yes, we can. But, you know, the, Tville is lack of parking, everybody parks there, not just us, you know, for people from across the street, other apartments or the people from up the street. Everybody parks on Pearl Street, you know, that, we can't just say it's our parking because it belongs, you know, in front of our property. But this is actually on our property that we can say it's our land and we should be able to use this land without a problem.
But it's not about the land part, it's about parking between the building and the street. And it's very clear that our rules are about, you cannot park in the front of your building between there and the street.
Well, everybody else on Pearl Street does, all the business on Pearl Street does have a parking in front of their business.
I was down there and I did not see other.
If you look at that store.
They park in the street.
No, there's actual parking in front of the building, where is Converse Store, down the street, 98 Pearl, not 98, 88 Pearl Street. And then TJ's Windows, same thing, in front of the building. And nobody else actually have a yard on it at all because they are right against the street, the rest of the properties. And old, old Health Department Building, which has a parking in front of it as well.
No, the Health Department has no parking in between the building and the street.
The old building, the old, the brick building there, right across from us, actually.
I don't remember the Health Department, they were in the one that used to be a funeral home.
Not funeral home, they were right next to the funeral home.
It has to be a very long time ago.
No, about four, five, six years ago.
It couldn't be, I've been on the Health District for over 10 years and it's been in their building down on, right over here.
Yeah, they moved here about six years ago. I'm 100% sure that's they, what they moved here. Not before 2010.
So is the bottom line to this saying that when, because you're, you were agreed to by the planning office to have 14 parking spaces?
Correct.
And the way it looks, you have four tenants?
Two tenants.
Well, they told me there's, the way I'm reading this thing, and you have five units, one being you.
No, there, there was a building on the back, back in the day, there used to be an ice house on the back, four family. And then this used to be another four family.
Are you saying then you actually have less people living in this building?
We have two apartments upstairs and one restaurant downstairs.
So that means you actually have more parking than the 14 spaces that you needed for?
Correct.
People living there?
Yes. But, you know, business is getting better, so we.
Well, we always like that business is getting better, but the thing is, it's still parking between it, so.
But this is not actually in front of the building, it's still, 80% of the parking is still on the side of the building. There's only three fit comes into the front of the building.
Okay.
Yep.
Roger, what's the definition of parking in front of a building? You raise an interesting question, is it, if it's 80% of the space, 20?
Well, the way the regulation reads it, it's between the building line and the street. So that's, it could be to the side if it's in front of the building, but it's anything in front of the building plane, you draw a line across and that's where it is.
So the, so the parking, if it encroaches that line, it?
It's in our zoning book.
So what we, what we do is we draw a imaginary line across the front? Yes.
Okay.
It's got to be behind that magic line.
But if you look at parking space one, that's, that doesn't comply either then. You know, they made it, they never gave us a problem about that back in, you know, six months ago.
So what about the fire zone?
Fire department is okay, police department is okay. Paul actually came in there himself, he parked himself and he said, "Take a picture of it, bring the zoning officer, tell him it's all set for me."
Do we have a letter from the fire marshal?
I don't have any letter, but I can get a letter. And I showed it to Mr. Rick Rochelle and he said he doesn't care.
Well, that doesn't sound like our zoning enforcement officer since he went through such an elaborate report here.
What do you mean?
Any other questions?
I talked to all the neighbors and everything, everybody is fine with it.
I have one question, but maybe it's more best directed at Roger. Was this supposed to be like an elevated section of dirt here? What's this on the plan, this little squiggly line here? Was that supposed to be a change in grade?
Where, we're looking at?
The area you have highlighted on your.
That's, where the highlight is where we're looking to use as a parking.
Oh, I understand that, but originally what was supposed to have been there, the grade was supposed to have been raised a little bit? Or is that existing?
There is a grass there with a tree and a landscaping there.
I believe it was part of the grassy area.
That was the existing grass.
Supposed to be grass.
Okay, thanks.
There may have been a curb there or something.
Okay.
And as the board knows, it doesn't matter whether, you know, every police and fire and everybody liked it, it doesn't matter whether Mr. Rochelli liked it, or I liked it, or Jen liked it. The question is, is, you know, what do the regulations state? And do you meet the requirements for a zoning variance?
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Well, you can have a seat and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
I don't see the problem. I mean, it's very clear, our rules are clear. You cannot park between the building and the street in the TVC zone. And you can park in the street, so the problem solves itself. And I don't see the hardship.
Okay. Anybody else? Guys are awful quiet over there. I got you. I'm inclined to agree with, with Mary Ann. In keeping with the aesthetics that we're trying to look at for the TVC district, if it's going to be a storefront district, then you don't want the parking in front of your storefront. Kind of takes that away. I can think of one other place that we allowed it once before and that was a unique situation with the firehouse. Because obviously they couldn't park behind because they need room for their apparatus to get out and around the building. So we did make that exception for them. But I don't see the need to make exceptions for storefronts.
So devil's advocate here, whoever did this, put that parking space there before he bought the.
Well, he, he bought it.
Hold on. Can you turn your microphone on and say it again?
So devil's advocate here, he bought the property with that space in front of it. Kind of hard to say.
No, I, I don't believe he did. I believe he bought the property and then redid the parking lot.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
Am I correct?
I thought he said that it came that way.
So at one point, as it, as Andrew showed on the, the blueprints, it did show that it was a raised elevation, which was probably a grassy area that was there at one point.
Okay.
So when they put in the new driveway, they kind of cut that out. Maybe, I, I hate to say with the intention of putting a parking spot, we don't really know.
Right.
Nobody, nobody asked, it was irrelevant at that point and this point. But it wasn't always like that. And the, as far as, as, as the applicant stated, one of the other parking lots is forward of the building too. That's something that the planning department can address with him. Maybe the spots were made too, too wide, I don't know, but we, you know, depending on how the, the commission votes, I'd like to see the, the whole thing addressed so that his parking lot can come into compliance in one way or another.
Well, why are you talking, there's another problem?
The applicant's saying that the parking spaces over here come in front of the building.
I, I think the, the angle changes where the, the front line of the building is if you put a.
Again, that has nothing to do with us.
Right, I'm just saying, depending on how the commission votes.
What did you say, Andrew?
If you put a straight line across it, it is behind the building line.
Right.
It's just the way that the, the, the shape of the property changes.
The way they, they, it is here.
Yes.
The way they put it in real life, he's saying that parking spots is forward.
The lines aren't striped to match the plan.
So, so that just, depending on how the commission votes, that'll have to be addressed.
No.
That's not our issue, right?
Has nothing to do with us.
If the commission votes to allow him to park forward of the building, then it has nothing to do with us. If the commission votes to not allow him to park forward of the building, then that spot would need to be addressed. And if there's another one forward of the building, it would also need to be addressed.
And again, that's him telling you that, I don't believe that Mr. Rochelli would have gone out there and missed it.
I'm just saying.
So, that's right.
The only item, the only item before you is the one parking space.
Parking spot.
Just the housekeeping, Mr. Chairman, and all of you voted to close the public hearings, so you just got to make sure who's, who the five voting are on the.
So we have five regular members here tonight, they are the voting members.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm sorry.
And that's who we've recorded on closing the public hearing, but everyone raised their hand.
Okay, I was only looking at the regular members, I apologize. So, there's five regular members, if you're an alternate tonight, you're not part of the voting body. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand?
You don't vote.
All opposed?
Kelly does vote, she's a regular member.
Yeah, she's a regular member.
So hold on. All regular members get to vote. So if you're in favor of allowing him to park in front of the building, signify by raising your right hand.
Okay.
If you're opposed, signify by raising your right hand.
That's what I misunderstood.
All right. Variance is denied.
Another thing I can address. The zoning officer is saying that I'm a public hearing.
The, the public hearing is closed, you'll have to address it with the, with the staff.
Nobody helps, so that's why I'm here. People parking there, I, I'm getting a letter saying that I will be, get fined for it. What's going to happen with that? I put a no parking sign there.
I, I would, I would put grass back in there.
You can put a planer box in front of it, or you can take up the asphalt and put grass. And you've been advised on both of those.
Well, it's not my problem if somebody parks there. You know, if you, if you, if you're parking in a no parking space, why, it should be a landowner's problem.
Sir, with all due respect, that was grass and you made it a part, you, you paved it and made it a parking space. And your, your vehicle parks there the most.
Not my vehicle, it's the driver's vehicle of the business.
Either way, the, the variance has been denied.
I understand that.
You need to find a way of, of fixing the problem.
If I'm going to have to take this as a legal action, I will take it, that's no problem. But I don't want to get fined for the rest of the people.
Okay.
You know, if, if, I'm sure somebody here drives a town vehicle and they speed up.
Could, could you, could you give our zoning enforcement officer a call? And he will help you out.
I did many times.
Okay.
I'm sure, you know, somebody here drives a town's vehicle and if they speeding on down the Route 5 and if they get pulled over and get a ticketed, does the ticket go to the town or the driver?
All right, we have our minutes from our last meeting.
Wait, we need to do the paperwork first.
I guess I want to help, so. Just want to, this is town, we invest any money into it.
Sorry about that, Kelly. Okay, so, so I got down here, it's denied because there is no parking between the, it's denied because there is no parking between the building and the street per section 10.10.5D.
And applicant showed no reason for variance, no hardship.
No hardship.
Okay, so. Who, board member I think was, I made the motion?
Charlie seconded.
Okay. Just for a question to you, Jen. In my z zoning book, on page 106 of 126, the ending words are missing on section D. Could you just double check?
Yeah, we noticed that, that was like just a scribbler's error that we noticed and we went back to the previous version and we were, when we were editing the regulations to add in new sections, somehow that just got.
Those words got deleted, right? So they're in back, because I downloaded my book from, so you've upgraded it.
Yeah, and you'll be getting new regulations coming up anyway because we redid them again to add the new chicken regulations in. So you'll be getting those in your next pack.
And we put those three words back in.
We put those words back in.
Well, let me tell you, I was like, okay, what are you talking about here? You kind of threw me there.
Yeah.
Did we give the two new folks zoning books?
Yeah.
All right. Well, can we all find the minutes from our last month's meeting? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Made by Mary Ann, seconded by Andrew. Discussion? Abstaining none, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Moving right along.
Jen, you just need a signature on the previous minutes that I have in here.
Uh, yeah, yep.
Okay, correspondents, staff reports?
The only thing we have for you tonight is the updated ZBA, well, we have two items, but the updated ZBA forms, as you recall, when, when the commission worked with staff to update the regulations inadvertently, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, there's the provisions in there that the applicant must mark the site so that when you go out to the field, you can determine, you can see exactly what's being requested. Those have been put back in and so we have in your packets tonight, your revised forms that do have that, have that language and all applicants will be instructed to either stake the property or mark it, mark the pavement or something, which was, say, an inadvertent omission when the new forms were published. And we're constantly looking for your suggestions on the, the forms and so look them over and as you use them and, you know, the veterans on the commission and also the new folks, anything that you find would be more helpful, you know, by all means let us know. So these are the, at the leadership meeting we had, that was a request and so we fulfilled that request.
I'd like to talk to you about these, you okay?
Yep.
Okay, first off, you've made way too much paper for this item. And I'd like you to go back to putting the type to the same size because there's no reason why you need all this space for this. Basically, you took this much information and shoved it into one, two, three.
Four pages.
Four pages. And it's, and it's unnecessary. And it's also confusing for the applicant, in my opinion. I think we need to just shorten it back because we went through a lot of effort in previous life to get this form to be clean and clear. And I also noticed that the fees are not on here. They're missing off the top and I think that's pretty important. For one thing, it, it dates them a little bit, so if we know what we're looking at. And, and I also, like, just, just for a perfect example, why do you need all this room right here when you actually got away with it right here? It just seems like you, you spread it out to make a novel and it doesn't need to be. And the other thing I also think is, is when you go to the back page, Roger, it's very easy for the applicant, in my opinion, to understand our instructions because they're right on the very top and then they're, you know, give some information. And then they ask, then you ask them the questions. By the time they get through filling out the first page and the second page and the third page and they sign it and then they move to the fourth page and to the fifth page, I, I was like, okay, where are the rules? And then there's the other part, I think you gave some definitions on the subsequent pages. These aren't ZBA rules. They don't, these are not dates and deadlines, they don't match to ZBA, this board. They make probably a lot of sense to the Planning and Zoning Board, but not up to us. And for example, the dead, and Mo and I had to go back and forth on this because it's, when you, when you said the deadlines are 25 days prior to a board or commission meeting, well, we're a commission, we're not a board. So if you're going to give us, give instructions to the possible end user, I want them to be clean, very consistent. And, and if you're trying to use something over and over again, then we have to find that way. I understand that you kind of want a boilerplate. That one kind of threw me. The commission meeting, we, when they come to us, we hear it. When we're done hearing it, we vote on it. If we don't, it usually means we've just tabled it. So the second set of boxes, again, doesn't fit us. And then where the deadline is.
Madam Secretary, could you, where are you referring to? That you're referring to the?
I'm, the zoning board of appeal application form?
For which one now, you got the, the variance?
I'm, you go to all of them, they're all the same.
They actually are all identical depending on what, no matter what packet you go to.
Right, your instruction sheet's on the back.
The dates and deadline page.
Right, so that's, that's not part of your application, it's just for your information, but that's what the applicant gets as part of a whole instruction packet that is online.
Right, but you just told us that we got this, this is going to be our application. So if I walked in and needed a zoning application, would I not get this packet in my hand?
So, so it kind of would confuse the applicant because they think, if I were to look at this and not know how this worked, I would say that if I brought a project forward, that the first meeting, the commissioners are going to get my information and then on the next meeting, they're going to open the public hearing. That's not how ZBA works. ZBA, you give us, you know, they send in their application, we hear it that month. There's not a meeting ahead of it that we get the information.
So are you talking about the fourth box down? Typically, applications are discussed one to two meetings after they're officially received.
Yeah, that one and the second box.
All right, that's not our language, that's been in, that's, that was a Courtney Hendrickson for, uh, language that's in there. I have no problem in revising it, but we didn't, this staff didn't.
See, we've, we've never seen this page before.
Right, so this, this is something that came out of a guide that Courtney did like three, four years ago.
Don't, just, all, all, the, the thing is, is I'm under the impression from you folks that you've developed. Don't, the thing is, is I'm under the impression, from you folks, that you've developed three application packages for people to come in for different things. I find the packages to be volumous, when they don't need to be. I don't think you need to have them this long, when you really, this worked. This worked. So I don't know why we're fixing what works. What I, what, somewhere along the line, you took out the part where we told them to mark their property, and that's what we brought up...
Right.
At our sub-meeting, was put it back in, because that's important to us, especially...
Right, to know what they're talking about.
Right.
Right, a lot of times you go out, you can't even figure out what, where you're standing.
Now, if you want to take...
But you recall what happened was, former Commissioner Lynn Skoll, she went around, and she gathered application forms from every, all the surrounding towns, like 15 or 20. She then prepared a sample, new form, you had your old form. Rick Rochelli and I were here for three hours one night, we went over it line by line by line by line, and the result was this, the first seven pages, first seven pages. So we'll take your comment, and we'll look at it, and see if we can be, and we'll be as responsive as we can be, and bring it back.
Roger, I think the bottom line, the bottom line to this is, maybe this board will meet, we'll decide how we want the application to look, and then you could just print it.
What I'm suggesting is, that's what this is, is you did this in, like, last, a year ago December, we spent three hours here, Rick and I one night went over it line by line, so we're happy to do it again.
Okay, the, the, the application that you have in front of us, if I were to take the first eight pages, that's exactly what our current application is.
Right.
It's just spread out more.
Right. And we can, that's an easy fix, I think what I'm hearing is, the other eight pages are not, and not something you've seen or agreed with, and we should take it off until we figure out what it actually is. I mean, some of these things are like, like, page 15 is just a request for withdrawal of an application. I agree that doesn't have to be printed on every application, or a request for a hearing extension, usually those things are put on the table, and if somebody needs one, they use it, but it's not on here. So, we'll, we take your comments.
But I, but the thing, there was some parts I did like, is I liked that you gave, if an applicant comes in and they want the application to fill it out, I liked that you attached there, if they have a withdrawal form or something happens, so they got it right in their packet. But what I did notice is that the, what was it, the one compliance?
The application for the zoning compliance form.
Was the only form you didn't attach, which was the only one they all have to do. So, I think the idea is a good one, I just think you could get it, first off, I don't think we want to kill any more trees than we need to, I don't think your staff wants to stand and copy stuff they don't need to, and I think it just makes it a little more difficult for the applicant, they come in front of us, they have a hard time understanding variances as it is, that we don't need to make it any more convoluted, is my point. So, my suggestion through the chairman is that you go back to the two-pager, and just put the mark, the property back into the sheet. I don't think this, I think this worked. Unless I'm missing something, I think this worked. You have been around, Andrew.
No, absolutely, I think it, it works, but I think it's nice to give them the signed receipt in there, because that's something they have to do, so I don't, I don't see that, that's a big issue.
Nope, I think those additional parts.
You know, I think, I think that's okay, certainly.
Yep.
And I think the, the part about giving them the deadline, so when do you bring it in, and when does it come back? I, I think that's helpful, I think we're trying to drill it in, that we have a process, and you can't come in on the 18th day and expect it to make it in front of ZBA, because we need time to do all the stuff you need to do. So I'm, I think that's a great forward step, so if we, I don't have any issue with that, giving them more understanding, I just want the application to be clean and easy.
I would just, and I, I agree with Mary Ann, I like the fact that we're working on deadlines and timeframes. So it's a good thing to give them that information, but what we currently have doesn't work for this board. So if, if you changed it to the deadlines for ZBA, I, I think that...
Well, we have, we have the statutory deadlines, and which, like, when you asked in the legal ad today, so the DOR is the official date of receipt, and according to state statute, an application is officially received either the date of your next meeting or 35 days, whichever comes first, and then, and then the Connecticut General Statute clock starts. Well, the 25 days was us working, this board wants your package two weekends before your board meeting. And so, the 25 days gives staff an opportunity to review the application, see what it is, make sure it's appropriate, to come to the board, and then we got to put a legal notice in the newspaper, which has to be in 10 to 15 days. So we need the 15 days, just on advertising, so all that does is give staff 10 days to review the application, make sure it's complete, and that's, that's pretty much what we've been going with. I'm not sure we could do it much faster than that.
Nope, I want to change that.
But what I'm saying is, so you explained, just the way you did, you explained out the 25 days, we don't need to have the second part where the commissioner meeting, where the applicant is officially received by the commission during the next regular meeting. If you want to leave that, that's fine, but that's going to be our one meeting a month. And then the deadline for the public hearing sign, I get that, but then this whole chunk with the second commissioner meeting, we don't need anything like that.
Right, I, I get it.
So that's just confusing.
I get it.
They, they kind of think that it's going to be two meetings before they have a decision.
Right, I get it.
You know?
I'm, I'm hearing you.
So I, I like the timeframe, because that lets them know, look, if I didn't get it in by the state, I didn't get it in.
We got to customize it to your board.
Right.
Right, that's all we're saying.
Right.
Just so we don't have people come unprepared.
But I do, I do like the, the fact that we're working off a timeline now.
Right.
That's nice.
So. And I like the fact that we're going to have, and we've discussed it before, that we're going to have three different applications, because we've discussed before that a zoning application for variance doesn't necessarily work on an appeals application. So I, I do like that we're going to have three different applications, so.
Jen, why don't I just give you my marked-up version? I only messed up, I messed, played with one, I wasn't going to do it three times, okay? Because there are some parts that don't make sense to us. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so, right, so like the 14 copies, is that us plus you?
Again, 14 copies could be reduced for this commission.
Right, I don't want people to spend more money than they have to.
But really, it's only going to be reduced by two.
Yeah.
Two is two.
I'm just saying.
And two is a lot of paper.
I think the 14th was done just to make it uniform, but...
Yeah, it was uniform.
I understand why we don't need 14. All right, anything else, Roger?
The other thing is, we, we had a PowerPoint we gave you, we're not going to show it, I hope you take the time to read it, and I hope you also appreciate that your names are all on the back of it, page 32, which is right on the back, so if it's on the coffee table, you turn it over, there you are, the zoning board of appeals, hopefully we spelled everybody's name right. We believe that the, the planning and zoning staff is involved in, in all of the commissions, whether it be planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals, wetlands, historic district, they all have many, many applications, you all overlap, and this was an attempt to share information on everything that is going on. So, for example, just in zoning enforcement, in one, you know, it's on page 27, there were 97 formal complaints, and then 52 complaints by word of mouth, this is our annual statistics, and of those, 16 are active and being acted on. Two enforcement cases went to court, in which the town prevailed, and one of them is shown right there on that page, it was a 16 Glendale Road, which was the landscaping business. And then if you turn the page on page 28, you recall that 460 Enfield Street came to the zoning board of appeals, this was the garage that the guy had the apartment in, where sewer, sewage was going out into a, just an open pit in the, in the backyard. We did prevail in court in that case, so we wanted to give you some of those things. Also, the, we went through, we cooked some good-natured ribbing from folks about the chicken regulations, that we finally got a zoning regulation changed, but if you look in here, we got dozens of zoning regulation amendments that took place in the past year, and so we go through them for you. In terms of, on page 24, zoning permits as part of a building permit, the town of Enfield a few years ago streamlined its zoning permit process, and many communities, you first get a zoning permit, and then you take the zoning permit to the building department. In Enfield, they combine the two, so when the zoning enforcement officer signs the building permit, it is the zoning, that, that is the zoning permit, and so when they sign a zoning permit, a building permit, they're also reviewing it for wetlands, for wetland enforcement, for any ZBA action that might have taken place, or for the planning and zoning. And on the certificate of zoning compliance, we don't sign it until, I mean, the certificate of occupancy, we don't sign it until it's been inspected and they filled out a certificate of zoning compliance. So that is something that this board urged, that we pay close attention to, and we, we're doing that. So the, there were 53 signs and banner permits this year, there were 47 home occupation permits, those, those are zoning permits that do not go through the building department, 27 miscellaneous permits, and then there were 68 plan reviews as part of an ASBIL drawing that's submitted. And we do find that when they submit the ASBIL, it doesn't line up with what the approval is, and then they have to either go back to the, the commission that originally approved it, and, and ask them to make a change, or make a change in what was built. So we, I, I, we do believe we have a process now that ties everything together. So bond, we have, we have many, many, many performance bonds that are in place, that we have to review and process. So I won't go through the whole thing with you, but I would urge you to take a look at it, if you have any questions with respect to it, you know, give us a call. This is up on the website, and we do get people commenting on it. The town of Enfield in the last year saw an awful lot of projects approved, and you just go through some of them, and they're, they're all over the gamut, there's, they're commercial, they're industrial, they're retail, and so we just give you some examples that, and we have many more in the pipeline. The other thing we're trying to do now is we get you out that status of pending applications list, which goes through all of the applications that we have, and for all the boards and their pending status, we'll be getting another one out in the next couple of days, is, looks like this. Currently, there's 10 pages of applications that are in one form or another, pending in the planning office of, of a significant nature. Anywhere from pre-application assistance to, an application pending before a board or a commission, or them trying to get, meet, meet the conditions of approval, so they can get their final permit, sign, file in the land records, so they can go to the building department, or posting a bond, or we're in the process, we have to go out and inspect during construction, we review the ASBIL, and, and sign the certificate of zoning compliance, and the certificate of occupancy. People talk about the time it takes for a project to go through planning, just bear in mind that planning is involved in, from, from the, the concept of a project until you get a certificate of zoning compliance, that whole process, even if everything runs absolutely smooth, could take a year from the time somebody comes into the town, says, I'd like to move my business in, I'm going to get my permits to do everything, and we have several people there thrilled with the cooperation they've received from the planning office, and they took a year from, and they're happy. But it takes that long, from the time you come in, to go through the boards and commissions, particularly if you have wetlands or what have you.
I have some other business I'd like to talk about.
Yeah, so I'm just saying that it's, it's a, it's a long process, and the other thing we do, I just want you to be aware of, is we, we track, everything comes through the planning office, it's called the universal spreadsheet, and since we started this, we have 1,412 inquiries, these are customer inquiries, that people come in and ask, what is the process? How do I get a variance? Can, do I qualify for a variance? Can I go before the board? And which, some member of the planning staff will, will review what it is they want to do, and advise them. And now we can advise somebody that they qualify, that we think they will qualify for a variance, but we always say it's up to the board. We try to dissuade people if we don't think they have a variance, but in the ultimate, the end of the day, they have the right to apply if they want to. So, hopefully, that's a broad overview, and I just wanted to take that time to, yes.
If you could fix one thing on the website for me?
Sure.
It should be chairman, not chairwoman?
Don't tell me we did that to you, Mo. Oh, jeez, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of open items, are we at that point?
Go ahead.
I don't know if the lines, has Christie, at the Industrial Diesel and Drive Line, have they put in their certificate of compliance? Because I don't know if they have gone in and painted the lines in, and put their names on those parking spaces as we required.
I don't believe they, I don't believe they completed their application.
No, I think they were trying to get all of the site improvements done for the entire site, which also encompasses Industrial Diesel and Drive Line, done at one time, so right now I believe they're working on other site improvements over there. I don't think it's...
So I will keep that in my open notebook, so we can stay on top of that.
Let me, let me interject for just a moment. We didn't hear anything on the whole property. We only heard Industrial Drive.
Yeah, because it was an automotive location approval that you were looking at.
Right, so, I guess this board really has no say or concern with other improvements that need to take place there, but if they're open for business, then they need to have a certificate of occupancy, which means they need to have a certificate of zoning compliance in order to operate as a business at this point. So, we, we really need to make sure that their, their business is tightened up, before we concern about other things on the property that need to be taken care of.
The issue we had with them was, you, you recall that their business existed prior to them, that trucks were being repaired there for years, for, for the company that was there, and it wasn't open to the public, so they didn't need to come to this board. And so they've been open the entire time, and, and from time to time, the enforcement officers will go down there and inquire as to how come they're operating when they haven't completed all the things they need to complete. completed all the things they need to complete. And their answer has always been, well, they're still only doing their own bill, their own trucks.
But they're not at this point, because now it's a different company repairing the same trucks that were being repaired by the previous owner.
I hear you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm just asking that we button up their compliance.
So let's, so let's give them instructions. What do you want?
Yeah.
And how soon do you want it done?
Well, I, I would just like to see us move toward, you know, I'd have our zoning enforcement officer go down there, and, you know, the, we need to come up with a timeframe as to when they're going to come into compliance before action needs to be taken. But they do need to come into compliance, because the longer it gets let go, it'll just fall to the wayside. Which it brings me to one other thing, and, and I don't mean to cut in front of what you were doing, Mary Ann, but, um, we've asked for quite some time to have a monthly report on actions that we, the board has taken, and we still don't have that. So actually, I'm glad Mary Ann brought that up, because we would see that they haven't had it if we had that running list in our packet like we've asked.
Right, and that, Mr. Chairman, what it's saying is, and our goal was to get this to you today, we didn't, but it will be out in the, in the next couple of days. But this little status of all applications is every application that's gone through any board, and, uh, that is still open and active in terms of what the status is. And so you, you'll be able to know what went on with ZBA, as well as planning and zoning on wetlands and historic and everybody else.
But would that, the way you're doing it, will that get this board in trouble? Because if there's something on there that may come to us at some point, then I don't want to read it.
No, it's, um.
Public record.
I don't.
Yeah, it's just a.
Public information.
It's just a list of applications.
Just a list of everything that's, you know, from an idea, somebody's come in and they've put in a preliminary application because they want help.
Okay.
Right, but that, I, for me, I really want to just see the zoning board of appeal, where we have told people, are you done? Show us our compliance, because if we don't have it, then we're going to send the CEO back out there and say, if they're not in compliance, then they've done, they haven't done it.
It should be just a simple spreadsheet that says, in January, X, Y, Z came in front of you, this was your decision, this was the end result. In February, you know.
Right, it, it's an easy list, because in, in 2017, if you look at the report, there were only seven cases that came.
Right, very few.
And before ZBA, so it's very short.
So.
We'll do it.
And do we know if all seven cases filed their certificate of compliance?
Right.
We don't, we don't know what happened to those seven cases.
Got it.
Right, so when you go over to Industrial Diesel, it may seem minor, but from what I can see, they're parking trailers in the parking spots, which means they're not using the parking for parking, the way they're supposed to. There were supposed to be no trailers or anything near the building. There was supposed to be parking. And I'm not trying to be difficult to them, but it, it's just like anything else that comes. You ask us to follow the rules to the letter of the law, so we're consistent, then we, then we need to get everyone to do it back to us. So the second thing to the chairman, I was reading the, uh, I don't know what this thing is called, that Brian puts out, the PAV or PR?
PAR.
PAR. It's a very great, it's a wonderful document, I tell you, everybody should read it. But the one that caught me was the two Connecticut avenues, ZBA variance application on a lot size for commercial application, variance filed on the records on March 7th, applicant submitted P and Z plans on March 8th, and then the ART was held on March 28th, and the applicate, application does not meet zoning regulations, and the meeting was scheduled for the applicant for April 10th. I'm confused. When they came in front of us, the point was to give him the variance, which was reasonable, we all saw it, so that he would be in compliance, so he would go, did what happened, through the chairman?
That's a good question.
Yeah, so we've tried very hard, uh, to get that applicate, um, get that, uh, site to the point where the gentleman can develop it. And what, you can advise applicants, and sometimes they take your advice, and sometimes they don't.
Just a question, Rogers, I just want to know, did they file something that was broader than what they had originally intended?
Right, so here, here's the issue, that the only app, the only variance they asked for from this commission was a variance of lot area. The, um, they knew in advance, um, that the town would not allow them to park cars in Massachusetts. Uh, they didn't, uh, so, um, they, I assume, and they, they assumed that they were going to be allowed to do that. So the site plan they filed showed cars parked in Massachusetts, and you can't have a use in Enfield and your car's parked in Massachusetts. Uh, the town does not have any jurisdiction over land in Massachusetts. So, um, what we did was, we met with them. Um, I actually showed them how they could park cars in Connecticut. So they pulled their application, they redid it, they're working on it, and hopefully they'll bring it back. Uh, we had to give it back to them because it didn't meet regulations. That's what that meant.
So I just wanted to know if, when we gave the variance, it wasn't something that we misunderstood?
No, you. You gave them the variance, um, and, uh, they, there is, there was one little bump, oh, Madam Secretary, on that, in that, um, the frontage, in order to meet zoning, is on Connecticut Avenue and not on Enfield Street. And, um, we, we had a little issues with other departments who wanted them to use Enfield Street as their address. Two Enfield Street and two Connecticut Avenue are their exact same lot, so it doesn't really matter. Uh, so as long as they come in at two Connecticut Avenue, that's their street frontage, they have the area, the cars are parked in Connecticut, then, uh, they qualify to go to planning and zoning.
Okay, that was, thank you. I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other business?
Welcoming new people.
Mr. Chairman, could I, uh, correct my email and phone number and?
Absolutely.
Give that to Jennifer, because I've tried that several times, and.
Absolutely.
Just to speed up things getting to me, and where people reaching me.
You want to do it now, or?
I, I'll mark it up and hand it to her.
Uh, in your packets, you have a save the date, Wednesday, May 30th. You're in the council chambers for a stay in your lane. It's a chance for some of our new people to have some training, as well as some of our older people to have some training. Um, so please consider saving that date. So, uh, I'd like to see the entire board here, if we could get them here. And, uh, that way there we are.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just question, quick question. When an applicant wants to, uh, apply for a variance, um, who do they go to in the town to help, get help in filling out that application?
The planning department.
It is you?
Yep.
All right. That's it.
All right, I'd like to take opportunity to welcome our new people. We have a few of them. Um, if you have any questions, give me a call. Uh, if you're not going to make a meeting, I ask that you give me a call, let me know ahead of time. Um, your packets will be to you 14 days ahead of time, usually, um, the Friday, two Fridays before our meeting. All right? And, uh, you can ask any member of the board questions, uh, if you have any, and our planning department's always helpful also. You have any questions, concerns?
Well, I'm sure I will.
You, you do, Mr. Chairman, you do have an automobile, automotive location approval application for, uh, for next month.
Okay.
And that, that meeting, I think, is also moved up one, uh, one week because of the holiday, so it's the third, third week.
Yes. Yep, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.